So hopefully this is quick and we won't be here for long, so just go through the quick loud acknowledgement. Adolge indigenous peoples and ancestors and friends we now share. Okay, so adoption agenda. I mean, I know we said in calling the special meeting, these are the only items we discussed it was kind of a time sensitive one on an apparel. Field behavior and suffer if anybody wants to attend, should probably approve attendance. If that's okay with everybody, we can do that and maybe have an objection setting up. So here as representative, you were going already.
Yeah.
Can we just finish our agenda, the buffalo agenda and stuff?
Yeah, put that addition in there.
We have apparel.
Where are we putting?
Under, under the agenda. Under item two point two.
We do need everybody to vote in five of that in order to have a day jam.
So we could just take that vote while Deb's getting out there and all in favor. It's curious, that's good, we can do that. As a trend, hold on to your first. I have to discuss.
Here's MP.
The pair of field, field and supper.
N A P.
And B.
L A P.
And R A.
And field to run. Okay, that was moved by Linda. Oh, I already got that, that was carried. And Jim?
There we go.
Yeah, she said she was gonna rejoin. Trent said she was gonna rejoin.
Okay, so that'll take us down to. So I guess we do about some minutes of previous meeting, even though I didn't think, I thought we'd been waiting until August, but.
We don't have, we don't have minutes to date, yeah. So we're gonna add both of the sets of minutes to the.
Well, obviously, okay, so let's get over that, more delegations and policies review. So six point one point one eight is our first. Addition to the, it's our own addition. So short and sweet, Gary's only ten, that's a number representative, and Brenda, Dylan.
I'm on Dylan with that.
Brenda?
Yep.
Maria, yes, Linda, right? And I, and I will also just list townsters, and since we, that can, and Jerry, what do you got?
I would like to.
You're going to?
I'd like to, but I wouldn't, I don't want to feel like a brat.
That's a good song.
That's a good song, but I really liked it.
You moved? Uh, nobody, everybody?
I'll, I'll make them.
Gary, can I say all the things that we mentioned, yeah?
I was just gonna say, I'm already registered.
Oh.
I didn't register.
I never really saw, I don't hope they actually not registered. It's adorable. Whoever's, whoever's filling in for Teresa could maybe register, otherwise. They all in favor? There you go, page two of the agenda. Six, there's a six, one second.
Do you want the date? Oh, we should have the date.
July thirty, or March thirty? March thirty, or when?
Or is it?
It's hard about the research, research form. You can put man in or, no, whatever we set up.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's good, now we can go on to page two, six point six point three, Blake, wanna come up and. Item A is a egg disaster proclamation, so kind of an article that's raging outside, but I think the damage has been done. I know you provided a bunch of maps and information there, both conditions, rainfall. So what's, what's your thoughts, and if I see the M D A review and probably ground variables declared egg disasters for livestock portion?
At our region, yeah.
Fairview declared yesterday.
They did, for egg only or for anything?
Yeah, I just, I just saw the post this morning.
Bonneville declared yesterday too, and then Cypress County in the south. And Pincher Creek, I believe, they declared like early on in June because of water shortages for irrigation. So there's like five or six, I guess now, at Fairview, I didn't hear about Fairview until just now, but.
So I mean, just to remind everybody that we've done this in the past, it doesn't initiate any. Government action, but it brings awareness and for nothing, it's a problem isn't a region do it, then maybe egg recovery might kick in again or some kind of a program yet. But oh, wait, or Linda, you had a comment, please.
He's gonna say that I have quite a whole host reminder, especially ones of. Out, you know, wondering why we haven't done it for this. It wasn't like all of that, I'm just saying, we're advised we don't have to. But it is, it helps them when it comes to tax time, if we do it on a certain date so that they can claim, so they don't get the thing for income. Selling it out to them.
Yeah, so the livestock taxed for a program, federal program, and it's, it's basically just triggered off moisture is what it's triggered off of, so. We likely will become a prescribed region as of, they're writing on this report on Tuesday. The twenty twenty five prescribed region list from the federal government hasn't been released. I emailed them like a month ago asking them when they would, that got a response. But you'll see on the second page of the attachments, I kinda did a. Real quick draft letter, and that's like one of the things I'm. I put in there to ask is that they actually release that tax deferral. Early and get that list out there so people can start making plans, like whether they are gonna have a far, a fall sale and de-stock, or whether they choose to source feed. The other thing I asked in there was that in twenty twenty three, AFSC doubled the low yield allowance to encourage crops to be put to feed. So if they get put to feed, they effectively get written off as a zero. And to incentivize people to put them to feed if they're kinda under about nine bushels and fourteen bushels on barley. And then the other thing is, basically, if it continues to stay dry, look at putting a disaster package together through agri-recovery, which are all kind of things. They have done in the past. And at least for the AGI, Alberta government, Alberta agriculture and irrigation to start having those discussions with AFSC. The federal government counterparts and just kinda keep it on their radar. Cause typically, once these things start moving, they start falling off a cliff, right? So it goes from bad to worse rather quickly, you start seeing crop progress much faster through their stages. In twenty twenty three, even when they did double the low yield allowance, it already was kinda too late, like a lot of the crops were already, you know, you could have made dry feed out of them versus silage, so. It's better if they start having these discussions sooner to give people that avenues a little earlier on. Yeah, we're definitely dry, another thing I guess I'll point to is I attached the Alberta crop report for July fifteenth. People across the province are getting pretty frustrated with these reports, cause somehow the map show we get significantly drier, but then the people voluntarily rating crops. Said the crops got quite a bit drier, we're in like thirty percent of our rainfall, but somehow the crops got five percent better. So it's like, how do you make decisions on that when it's getting increasingly dry, but you have people reporting data saying, but the crops are getting better, and it's like. You know, those two are pretty correlated to go the other way, the drier it gets, the worse crop conditions get, but yet this report. Is saying the crops actually got five percent better from the last report a couple of weeks ago, right? Well, doesn't really make any sense, right? You got drier in the same time, but your crops got better. Um, there, it's also saying that we're not seeing any pest pressure, um, in the report, saying there's only three percent of the area seeing any like grasshopper pressure at thresholds like. Twelve to fifteen range. It's not really what we're seeing, so I'm not really sure where they're getting this, and the problem with it is. There are certain people that are signed up to fill out this report and it's voluntary, right? So it's, how many times did you leave your office in the last week, right? And they've been saying that usually the drier conditions you are, the more pest pressure you see of and sex damage, right? Like the two are fairly correlated together, cause it's all based on growing degree days. So some people have been complaining kind of about this, right? Cause this is a report the minister will get, and then I also attached the drought monitor map based on June thirtieth. So obviously you can see we're in a D two severe drought, our area, most of northern Alberta isn't a D one to D two. It's now what, twenty four days since this report, I expect the next report they'll release at the end of July to be. Much drier than this current one. But we did get rain recently, I did also in the maps pull the government. Weather stations through our area.
Which was up?
That's right after the Canadian drought monitor. Well, and so it's the pictures that look like this, just accumulated precip data. To basically, basically, I just kinda know a couple of maps shows the total rainfall in our area from the twenty first of April to July twenty first at that day. And these, each one of these lines are the weather stations that are situated across, across our municipality. And then the other one basically shows the rainfall we got. Like I think Terry and some people close to town said they got between an inch and two inches, but this, these weather stations where they're situated, they only got between. The yellow one that got twenty mils is actually across the river at Jack Pine. Most of our sites got between seven and fifteen mils, so that weather storm that come through and got Terry and some guys through town, it must've come through at the. Perfect angle to miss some of these weather stations and just be on the edge of them. So there are some areas here through like Hotchkiss, Deadwood, that did receive between an inch and two inches of rain, depending on where you were. On the twentieth, twenty first of July.
Is this just for that day, or is this total for the season?
Well, the, the one between fifteen and twenty bills, that's, that's just from the twentieth.
Just for that.
Twentieth in the morning to the twenty first, so that's just, that, just that day. Cause that's so when we had that thunderstorm, severe thunderstorm risk go through, but I'm just kinda highlighting that to show. It's incredibly variable through the county, right? So you get into pockets where you do all of a sudden see good crops, and then you get into like. For instance, my neighbor, he lives right at the Hawk Hills weather station about a mile away from it, and that weather station has picked up seventy three and a half mils, which is just under four inches of rainfall. While at his house a mile away, he's at fifty mils at his house, and me eight or ten miles at the hill, I'm at thirty seven mils for the whole year rainfall. Right? So that's just a twelve mile stretch, right? And then these weather stations fortunately picked up, well, unfortunately picked up only fifty to seven mils, but then you have localized guys like Terry had an inch and a quarter. Son had two inches in town here, so like, it's very spotty for where the rain falls, and it's been. Quite a few years since we've had systems where they move in and like soak the whole piece region for four or five days like we used to get seven, eight, nine, ten years ago. Where it seems like the last three years, it's like, are you just the lucky one that caught an inch of thunder, thunder shower, and then you could literally go to your mile. Your neighbor's six miles down the road, and he's like, I didn't get nothing, like, so that's what we're definitely seeing, I was up in Cag River the other day. And Cag River is probably some of the worst pasture growth I've seen driving around, like there are some fields, I talked to Kelly Broadhead. And I was asking him, like, Alec, your fields aren't regrowing at all, and I was telling him where I'm at, and he's like, he's like, I haven't even grazed that yet, and he's like, it didn't even come from spring, that's how dry we are, and how dry we were last fall. Is part of the issue, so we didn't have no moisture last fall, pretty dry. So he was saying, I actually haven't even grazed it, it's just brown since spring, it never tried to come, and then the grasshoppers, he actually said his grasshoppers are worse two weeks ago, because there's so little food in the, in the fields, they actually seem like they're just laying eggs, and the next. Next hatch isn't rehatching because there, there's no food, right? So.
I mean, the problem too, even though these numbers, there's big rainfall showing at these stations, I think the damage is already done on a lot of bayland, pasture land, right?
Yeah. Bringing and starting to recover now. So even like if you consider how dry we were last fall and good fall rains, like usually tell you you're gonna have good grass in the spring, and then if you don't have good fall rains, if you don't get rains in April, May. After the snow leaves, your grass is kinda usually ooped, and then even this, if you go back to the one that's April twenty first to July twenty first. It's basically showing we didn't really get any sizable amount of rain between like June twentieth and twenty third is when the rain started falling. A lot of times your grass has already been grazed off by then, a lot of guys already started haying by then because the hay was so short. And then all of our rain is coming now, it'll be interesting, I guess, to see what happens going forward, but I think the conditions are. Everything is already severely lacking in moisture and has already been overgrazed by people trying to hang on. That I'm not expecting a tremendous amount of regrowth, but it's hard to say what happens in the next month, like if all of a sudden we get four inches of rain. You know, but we can always rescind, you can always rescind a disaster, like if things all of a sudden miraculously turn around, you could rescind it, but. Most people typically don't.
Couldn't, just for the record, so the M D A of Fairview, they declared the disaster, but they mentioned both posing challenges for livestock and crop use in the municipality, so.
Livestock and crop.
Very dry in our area, we don't even know what crops looking.
And Jerry, you're no different, right?
No, it's all, so I don't know why you, you said wards five to seven, I think we should be comping white, I think.
I think I. I think I said that we declare. A disaster because of the livestock sector, I have to go back and read it, but I think said that throughout the whole county, we should declare a disaster for the livestock sector, and then ending disaster wards five through seven on grain pulses or all crops. So like, when I drive around, there still is potential for the crops, like some of them, like obviously are gonna be in a claim or right at your crop insurance average, but like. I'm not seeing a huge disaster like we saw in previous years where you're talking like you're gonna get. Like twenty bushel wheat, right? There's a lot of crops out there that still have potential for that forty to sixty five bushels, right? If we keep getting rain.
I'd argue with you there, this last week is a week and a half. Everything's been blasting, the, the canola is turning color, you know, like you can tell the difference, it's blasting, the peas are, aren't filling, and the grain is, is definitely not gonna be, you're gonna have. Two, two or four currents in the middle of the head that are gonna fill and the rest are gonna pinch off, you just overhear the. Uh, coming past North Star, all the, the feed wheat, the. The beards are all turning yellow, when they turn yellow, they don't fill.
Yeah, so I've been in, I don't know, in wards five, seven, I spent most of my time the last week, and there's definitely, like I said. Pockets of crop that, like I was just up in northern Hawk Hills today, and there is canola there that has potential to do fifty. Then you go eight, nine, ten miles to the south, and the canola is gonna run between twenty and thirty, depending on how it fills, and then you go another couple of miles, and you see some later seeded canola that come up spotty. And half of it didn't come up till the late mid-June rains, and it's gonna run ten or fifteen, right? So when you average that out in my mind, they're still gonna average somewhere between thirty and forty is like where we sit today. If it continues to get dry, and like, like I said, there's a swath in the middle of the county that did get an inch to two inches of rain, depending on where you are. So that's just why it makes it challenging across your county, I just think as far as it goes for the lack of feed and for the livestock sector. Across the entire county, the livestock sector is gonna have to source feed pasture shortage, look at de-stocking, looking into bringing feed in from anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars a bale. And then there's just not a lot, right? So then also when you start seeing pockets all through your region, all of a sudden now you gotta look at like trucking feed from central Alberta, well, that's not gonna be feasible for a lot of guys. So to me, the livestock sector where we're at now isn't a definite disaster, there's nothing wrong with just claiming it across all. All the things, like if you think it's gonna get worse, but from what I've seen, there still is potential there, I've been in some wheat fields. Like I got some bad wheat fields that might get grown off, they're right around ten bushels, like just one field, and then I got other stuff that's gonna do twenty, and then another neighbor's field I've been in is gonna do thirty five, and then on the very north end of Hawk Hills, the potential is still there for sixty five to seventy. So. Like the heads were, the heads each had had like forty seeds in them, right? And then they had forty seven plants per square foot, nice thick, still green. The potential is there, if it stays dry for two weeks, you are right, the bottom part of the head and the top part of the head are gonna start shrinking, you're gonna start having grain shrivel, you're gonna have quality issues. Lightweight grain, right? So those issues can definitely develop, I'm just telling you like where things are now, uh, if you're predicting it to be dry for the next two to four weeks, yeah, things are gonna get worse, like every, every week that goes by, you don't get no rain, you can take. You know, three, four, five percent off the yield, right? And you can just keep doing that until the harvest, right? So that's all things to consider, like the, the two week forecast basically is we're gonna get some rain today and tomorrow, and then after that, we're basically pretty dry, twenty five to twenty seven degrees for the next two weeks. But four days from now, they can all of a sudden have a severe thunderstorm risk, like the, the day he, he got an inch, two inches rain through town, it wasn't forecasted at all, then all of a sudden, like two o'clock, severe thunderstorm risk, and. Think everybody got rained between six and eight o'clock.
Linda, you had a comment?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think it should be the whole.
You should call it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Just because.
My work. Some have decent crops. I'm not gonna, pasture's terrible, but there are some that have decent crops.
Yeah.
And in my work, and it's spotty, and then.
That's what I'm getting.
Right where there's actually. Twice.
Yeah.
So like you said, it's like the people that seeded later, like two weeks later, are, their crops don't look as bad.
As bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, seeing in some areas like where the late and seeding canola crop, if they seeded shallow, only half of it come up. Low spots come up off the start, and then the other stuff didn't come up till like June twentieth, twenty fifth, that time it popped up out of the ground, so then it's, you have this staged mess. And then, you know, the hilltops are dry to begin with, so they come up late, then they go dry again, so now they're just kinda like stunted standing, they're not doing nothing, but. Like, the recommendation I have there is declaring a disaster on the livestock sector for the whole county. And then it says basically use the disaster declaration to, uh, to raise awareness of localized disasters. Happening in five, six, seven, because of the oilseed crops, and then basically if persistent dry weather remains. You can upgrade the pending disaster to all the other wards to a definite disaster once it triggers the RMA guidelines. So, RMA guidelines, they, I think it's a terrible document because it doesn't consider enough, it's just basically what. Fact, what portion of your crops fall in the poor rating? And then they say that fifty percent of your crops across the municipality have to be rated as poor, and then they don't give a, a definition of what's poor, what's poor, thirty percent yield reduction, seventy percent yield reduction, like below crop insurance thresholds. So that's like completely up to our idea, so what I'm saying is. When I drive across the county, it doesn't matter whether I'm in Cag River or wards one, I'm gonna find half the crops that are gonna yield above crop insurance average, cause they hit some rains, and then I'm gonna have. Half the crops that are gonna be under people's averages or what they expected in the spring by varying degrees. Where does poor start, where does fair start, where does good start, where does excellent start, right? So all's I'm saying is for sure the county, because of the feed shortage, lack of regrowth, pest pressure. Livestock sector, definite disaster, county top to bottom, one through seven. The hardest hit wards are the driest wards, which in my mind are basically everything north of Hotchkiss, so even like you get over at Breaking Point. Uh, like where the hotter ends are, that's really bad, everything north there is like, to me, that is on the verge of being a disaster as it sits today. Everywhere south, there's enough pockets of good stuff, like Brent said, where you drive and you see good crops for a few miles, and all of a sudden you see some bad crops, right? Those are like kind of, if we stay dry for two, three weeks, yeah, they're now a definite disaster, I just feel like it's too easy to call it on that, but we do know what the forecast's gonna be, so we can do either thing.
So just, this is my opposite issue personally, there are egg fieldments, maybe, but when you drive by a crop. Cause I've been watching my neighbor's crop, a wheat crop that I thought was one of the best crops in the country, and it still looks not bad when you drive by at eighty kilometers an hour. I flew my drone over it, and there is a lot of white going on in it now, big pockets of, of heat scalding. It's just like what you're kinda describing, so I think what the combine is gonna see and what you're seeing from the road are gonna be two different stories, I don't like this rain, it's not gonna recover that now, right? Those, it places that heat blister on it like that, and the canola, the same thing. So I, I, I really feel like we just clear outright egg disaster, crops, pulses, oilseeds, livestock, everything.
Yeah, it's totally fine.
Hard, right? I mean, because I, I truly think that there's, there's, it's. Even though like what Brett said, I agree with, there's some looking good, you see out by Kenny Deckens or. There's some beautiful land up there, they don't generally get crop features up there, their crop feature is. Somebody else's good crop, right? When I used to grow canola myself, I got twenty bushel acre, I was happy, I thought that was a bumper crop, right?
Yeah.
They, they consider anything less than thirty or forty, even on these conditions, a crop, you're right, so.
Well, they also probably have two hundred and fifty dollars an acre in their crop, right? You know, they mean, we're, like somebody where.
Different than I ever did, that's no question about that, but. So anyway, I, I, I just, I don't, it's up to council's decision, but I, I don't see any harm in just making an outright egg disaster.
Yeah, I agree.
I, and I think that if we declare it like that, there is a potential for the livestock guys to, to. Like if AFSC changes it, like they did the other year, that there is a, uh, there could be some value. In some of them crops yet, that people don't have to truck three hundred miles to get feed, and so maybe this would, uh, you know, hurry that along, so that would help.
Yeah, the, the problem with like low yield allowance, I guess I'll just kinda explain. How it works is like. You have to fall under what they deem the low yield allowance, and then it has, it, it only will count as a zero if you put it to feed. So the problem is, like where low yield allowance is set now. Is the current rate every year is for like four and a half bushels on wheat, and it's like seven and a half bushels on barley is where it is now. So even if they double it, you get to like nine and fourteen. The problem is, I'm, I'm not seeing any crops that are nine bushel wheat today, and I probably have one crop of fifty acres that is the closest. That I've seen to ten bushels, and the only reason why I know what that looks like is cause I've had it in twenty twenty three, right? So then you be, you, what you end up running into is issues where a lot of the crops may be say twenty bushels on wheat. Well, twenty bushels times eight dollars is a hundred and sixty dollars, right? It's not gonna get wrote off as a zero.
Yeah, but you're all, you're not taking the, the cost of harvesting and that all too, that.
That's where the low yield allowance is set at, that's why it's set at today at four and a half bushels, cause four and a half bushels is roughly thirty five, forty dollars, so AFSC basically says. If you only have forty five dollars worth of crop there, you can write it off and call it a zero because it's not worth combining, right? So all's I'm saying is if you're at sixteen. The person's still gonna have to go and buy that feed at a farm, at a farm, and twenty bushel wheat is gonna make like a bale and a half, two bales of silage, by the time he puts it up, you're a hundred dollars in a po, out of pocket, right? Cause that farmer's just not gonna give it for free, which may be advantage to somebody, but a lot of times right now, you can buy silage bales that are already priced at ninety to a hundred and ten bales already made, right? So maybe people still wanna buy feed, whereas I don't see a lot of twenty bushel wheat crops when I drive around yet, right? What happens in the next two weeks? That, that's where it is, right? So I, like, even if they double low yield allowance, it's not gonna, I guess my point is it's not gonna free up a lot of crop, cause there's just not a lot of crop. If it, if there was a bunch of nine bushel wheat crop, well, it's a no-brainer, write it off as a zero, you could almost just give it to your neighbor, right? Or whatever, pay fifty bucks a bale and standing, guy comes and puts it all up, pulls it off. Today, I don't see us being as bad as twenty twenty three yet, that's my only point. But that's not to discourage you guys from just saying, hey, we only wanna do this once, things are bad enough, or cast looks terrible, we'll just readjust the, um. Draft letter, whatever that I have there to include. Everything on crop side and livestock, and there's like, there's no harm to, to that, right?
That's, and I mean, yeah, that's the discussion that's outside of what, I mean, this declaring a night disaster might. Spark them to consider that, but that was, that's really nothing to do with what you can do, that's under their control, right?
AFSC'd have to get pressure from AGI, from the minister, right?
And, and, and this might help that, right? I mean, this. Add to, I mean, maybe M D A fees, I mean, so I'm either gonna declare the next, I don't know what their situation is, but if you're doing.
All the media releases I've seen so far, most people are just calling for the tax deferral, like people aren't even calling for doubling the low yield allowance like they did in twenty twenty three to offer that avenue. So it's at least another idea somebody's throwing out there.
Okay, I think we've discussed, is anybody prepared to make a motion of some sort, I mean, yeah, there's our draft out there, but we definitely edit that, but we think we wanna. I mean, yeah, there's our draft out there, but we definitely edit that, but we think we wanna declare a. Not people and egg disaster.
Yeah, I'm ready to make the motion. I think we should just go egg disaster, including both livestock and crop across the board. I think that's what I'm, I'm seeing in my neck of the woods too, is a lot of the crops, you know, half the canola come up, half of it, and it's really spotty. Drive down Highway thirty, tonight the crop looks really great, so you get down Rain Road, Mount Way, you're like, whoa, there's a lot of bare spots and it's. Yeah, pastures are awful.
But I think the canola is gonna be quite disappointing, it's all pouring out of lower now during that heat, it must be a pretty small seed.
I mean, we're not, we're not even cutting hay on our field. I got the neighbor, she walked her cows over and she's electric fenced and she's just gonna graze it for me because it's not even melted, so.
Yeah. The one thing about canola is it's an incredibly plastic plant, like, um, in twenty twenty-three, I had some canola wrote off. They come and did seven bushels, well, right after they wrote it off, we actually got four inches of rain. And my dad's that he didn't wrote off filled to twenty-five, so the seed got big, heavy and fat. Uh, and that rain wasn't forecasted, it just all of a sudden we got into August and it put it in there, um. So canola is a tremendous plastic plant where it could shock you. You could look at it and go, that's a fifteen bushel crop. And then you just get some rains and there's some cool weather and all of a sudden it's twenty-five.
As long as you don't get big storms, I'll put it all on the ground.
Lack of feed, pasture growth and crop performance or something.
You probably don't even have to really do that in your motion, you can just write egg disaster across all sectors, across the entire municipality. And then your letter and your media releases you do, you can, you can specify. Yeah, just put for all, or put for all sectors.
Yeah, I like that for all sectors. And I'm making be more specific and. Like in the letters, I will be. Yeah, I'm fine.
See none, all, all in favor? Okay. Glad we didn't try to do that, we knew we were like we talked about this and. A I M B is a roadside mowing and so, and even have, as you've seen, there's been lots of close months going around and both. Black the mowing, they're poor mowing and. Except I don't wanna make a decision on it today, on their budget decision. But I guess we should probably be giving some direction when we start putting their budget together, what we wanna do. We wanna continue what we're doing, have one year, have the next year full butt cutting or go back to the.
Well, we'll have to re-tender here in the fall, October for a new contract, right?
But I'll be re-tender, I'll re-tender the same as we're doing, but we'll have an adoption.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you, like we're just coming up for the re-tendering process, so. Direction's perfectly fine at this time.
Right. So that's gonna, I mean, this is not related to that. So we came up to my word and they did a bunch of mowing on the south side of Rogers River and I haven't seen anybody for a month now, like they never did anything.
Yeah, they jumped east of Manning. They started like kinda in Gloria's part, west of the highway and then jumped into Nautica Uin and then. I don't know, decided we're gonna go east of Manning. I think they're just trying to stay around Manning. Like right now, before they get too far north and then, you know, once you get across the vehicle, you're.
That's true. I thought maybe they were, was, is that about to do it or something? They've got a, they've got a system, they're similar to them.
Yeah, that's what they decided to do, right? Like they're contractors, we give them overall big direction on what we wanna see, but. In no way are we supposed to micromanage like where they, what they do on like a weekly or daily level, right? So that's where they decided to go and.
I guess you're all the roles to make sure they do it and do it to your standards.
Yeah, basically check in on them once a week, go see what they're doing. Uh, so far I haven't heard of any, one sign they hit so far, something about it was raw and no, or some, I don't know. Backed into it, I don't know.
So anyway, as far as mowing, we don't have to make any decision today, the, the contract is up this year and we're gonna re-tender it.
Well, I shared an email with all my thoughts based on the letter and had, um. But I don't know if there's any questions in particular of the letter. I never really wrote a report for it because the letter's there, you guys seen it, you seen. My thoughts on it, Charles's thoughts, some of the other counselors kind of put their thoughts after reading what we were doing. Um, I by no means was trying to, like, the mowing is, we are mowing public works infrastructure. So I'm kinda the middleman for working with Charles managing it. My whole point was saying like, if this does come in-house, that it should go to Public Works and my whole thing for that is like. Well, Charles comment was really good, saying like they're already overworked, like they can't do this. And my whole point is with the resources Public Works has and the staff they have spread out through the county, if you're trying to bring that in. On the ag side of things, we don't have that. We don't have trucks with fuel tanks. We don't have supervisors in Dixonville. We don't have two shops spread out over the county. So now all of a sudden like, how are we trying to rework that infrastructure and already a tax system? That they're already overloaded in. So it's kinda to, he did a good job explaining like how taxed they are. Well, if we wanna bring it into ag, well, all of a sudden we need a mobile service truck. We need to do all these things. Like if we look at bringing it in. In-house, it's a lot more than we just go and buy a couple mowers and hire some eighteen-year-old kids to run them and everything's good, right? Um, a bunch of the solutions, like obviously all the concerns he had at the top are things. We have discussed at length, visibility, safety, aesthetics, um, drainage, whatever else, those are all things we've debated. All the solutions aren't really gonna save any money. If anything, they're gonna cost us more money. Um, plus, we're gonna have it like all of a sudden, if you have guys only mowing thirty mile sections or parts of wards, like. You're gonna have to run around and check in all these guys. Are they gonna have safety programs, WCV programs? He had a solution like, well, maybe you pay some farmers to mow their own ditches if they want to. Okay, well, we gotta do it at a discount rate, so we pay you fifty bucks a mile. So you make two hundred dollars on your two miles to mow your road, so you're happy, but you smash one sign or one rural address sign, and now we bill you two hundred bucks. Like you're out money or they destroyed a two thousand dollar covert install, well. Hey, like you're all of a sudden lost money. So I don't think any of those solutions he had. Were all that valid or actually gonna save us any money or be any cost effective? There's no municipalities that are sitting on like ten mowers that mow for three weeks and then sit idle all year because, you know, they're under the same constraints we are cost-wise. So to me, it just, it ultimately boils down to this particular individual. He phoned last time, we originally went to the two every other year. He also never phones with concerns for wards five, six, seven, when one, two, three and four get mowed nicely, full cut. He never phones and says, it's just a real safety concern, them guys in five, they're never gonna be able to get an ambulance to their house or whatever. He's never concerned. It's just. When it particularly affects him. So I just kinda feel like in particular, he just wants his area mowed, no matter what, no matter what the cost. To some level of degree, and then that's completely up to you guys, what, what level of service would you like to see? Do we go to half shoulder cut, one, every, half shoulder cut, half full cut? Do we go to mowing the full county, full cut? Uh, and then whatever variance of that, you just take our existing budget. Multiply it out and on whatever fraction you guys want to see fit and then you can kinda determine. We were a third full cut, two-third shoulder cut. For the last.
And I know that's gonna cost more than what we're doing right now, but, um. Like I was driving on two fifty two doing my detour and the road, the grass is like grown right into the road. Now, and like now they're, they have to graze it all, you know, there's big chunks. So like it, it deteriorates the roads.
Yeah, the only problem I see with going back to a third, maybe Charles has more. Yeah. So the problem I see with going back to a third full cut and two-third shoulder cut is, we did that for six years. And then before that, when I first started, we might've done that for nine years, no, six years. And then before, when I first started, we were actually two-thirds folder cut, a third shoulder cut, and then that price got outrageous, so that we dropped to the one-third. Two-third shoulder cut reverse. The problem I seen when we went to only mowing the roads full cut every three years is. By the time they come back on that third year to get a full cut, the brush was starting to get outrageous and they were starting wanting to go around it. And even now, every second year, we have to hold the feet to the fire and be like, kid, you can't go around those six-foot trees, like the contract says, that's what you agreed to. Um, so when we go to once every three years, we're gonna be running into those issues and then all of a sudden you lose, say. Four or five miles of road and they have to come in and mulch it in four or five years. Well, that's other costs you have to kinda attribute back to the lack of mowing quality, um.
Not only that, like it's gonna be more work for the mowers, so it's gonna take them longer if he's only doing the shoulder cut and not.
Yeah, so right now they basically do our existing program with two mowers. If they go to the two-thirds, one-third, it was three mowers. And when they were two-thirds, one-third, they needed four mowers. So now all of a sudden you're asking somebody to invest a tremendous amount of capital cost for three months of work. And then the other three months, that equipment largely sits idle because of snow and whatever else, right? So the mowers for sure sit idle, maybe you could repurpose the tractors, um. So I, I, I personally think we should not deviate from lower than full cut every other year. That's my take. I don't know if Charles has any input with that with the brush, because if we start losing control on brush, we either have to. Do more spraying or mulching, the mulching is in Public Works budget anyways, so that's something you have to attribute cost to that. And then if you wanna do spraying and increase our spraying program, if we save forty grand on mowing to just turn around and have to add forty grand into contracted spraying and chemical. Well, we're not, we're not really gaining anything, right? So that would be my recommendation is that you don't deviate from the least full cutting every second year.
Charles, any thoughts?
No, uh, I, I agree with everything that's said here so far, but, uh. Yeah, our graders have a heck of a time when the grasses. Got a few tall there on the shoulders, like Brad was saying, the, and the clumps of grass on the road and I mean, they. They do their best to try to keep that off of the road, but. Same time too, I mean, we had similar, similar issue here last year when, when we do a re-gravel program. Yeah, it'd be nice that by the time we come to do the re-gravel, that they're far enough ahead and fast enough ahead of us that they can. Get everything cut before we get to gravel, but that's never the case.
Yeah, that's also the issue too with like starting earlier and like we seen it two years ago in Alamo Province on how they're, um. Mowing the, uh, primary roads, like the paved roads. We seem to be on the rotation where they're coming through early and like even in Cag River, when I was up there today. They did mow full cut and it all looks really nice, but the sweet clover on the edge of the road is already two and a half feet tall. And in another month, you're not even gonna be able to tell it was mowed and that's on a year with no rain. Whereas the one year they come through and mowed us early, right after they mowed us, we got like two or three inches of rain, I think last year. And in a month, you couldn't even tell the province had been through and actually the grass that was cut was now growing higher and heading out higher than the stuff that wasn't cut. And that's the issue I see with doing too much shoulder cut. Is the mowers always like to start with a shoulder cut because they can get over so much area faster per day. And then they can start billing the county, right, for getting some money coming in. That a lot of times we start with a shoulder cut to get ahead of some projects or whatever else. And then all of a sudden you come back, you start that in June and by July twentieth, it's like.
Ongoing problem, right? I mean, we've got so much area to cover that we can't do everybody in July, so we, the.
Yeah.
The reality of it, right?
Eleven hundred kilometers of road to cover, so twenty, twenty-two hundred kilometers of ditch to mow. Is, isn't gonna.
First stuff is gonna regrow, right?
Oh, I was just gonna say, it just makes sense to go to start the mowing where the gravel comes.
And we usually do, but this year with the mowing and harvest. Doesn't help at all.
So, so really in conclusion, I mean, this is gonna be a re-tender, bring the tenders back to council and make, they can discuss it and decide if, you know. Maybe the prices will come in really exorbitant, you might not, you have a lot of doing less, you know, I, I hope not, but I mean.
Maybe when we do the tender, we could put the three options in there that they focus on all three options and then council can make a decision on. One of the option becomes one desire.
Absolutely, I, I honestly do.
So last time, last time we had, um, Tim in here and he was getting everybody jazzed up about, uh, increasing level of service. We kinda did do that, right? Like I reached out to the contractors and said like, what would it cost for you to incorporate a shoulder cut? And got his pricing and I compiled that all, right? And we took it to council in October before we tendered it all out. And it was basically, saw the prices and everybody just said, yeah, we're not changing. It was leave it at the half, full cut, half shoulder cut. So that was. You know, uh, I guess we got a little bit of an idea there and then we basically just re-tendered it out at the half full cut, right? So like we can kinda know where the prices are gonna be, like sure, we can tender it out with three options, but now you're kinda convoluted in the process and. I guess not too bad, but we could definitely do that. You just guys really have to decide what are those options? Like what do you guys wanna do? Is it, I heard from Brenda, go back to a third full cut, two-third shoulder cut? I would like to see us not deviate from less than half full cut, so that right away puts us at half full cut, half shoulder cut. So now you're looking, going back to four mowers, like every year you do half shoulder, half full. The other option that I've thrown out before is you isolate your big roads and areas and your major roads. And do them full cut every year, just the major roads. And then at least people, if. They could get on a route that was mowed for safety or visibility concerns, they'd get to whatever. The Smith Mills Road as fast as possible, the Sulfur Lake Road, the Chinook Valley Road, your big roads in your wards that you guys wanna see done. But then eventually that's gonna become a slippery slope, but somebody will come back and say, well, my road's really busy and my road's a bus route. And this blah, blah, blah is this, right?
And then if you don't, or if you hit that one early and we, we do get a year with rain. Well, then they're looking at recuts and stuff like this, so where does it all end? That's the.
So. Let's accept this report for information, but should we respond to the letter? Did letter go?
Uh, he emailed it to me directly and then I forwarded it to him. I don't know if it ever come to the office. I forwarded it from. He sent it just to me and then I forwarded it to Teresa, then she printed and stamped it and that's how it come, so. Him, him, he's well aware, like him and I had a lot of conversations, it's gonna be a budget issue, like nothing is gonna be done until budget season, when it's re-tendered. And he's well aware of that. So.
If he responds again, then we.
I, I think.
But otherwise we can just.
And, and I explained that to him and I think that's what he's expecting, so I, given that I took the complaints and the calls, I'm fine. If we don't send a letter, I think, I think he understands. If anything changes, I'll let you know, but he kind of was aware that that's what happened, so.
One point I would like to make here that, that I think is important. In regard to the tender. If you put in multiple options and, and. You are going to likely see that the contractor is going to put in an inflated price. Because they don't know which option you were going to go with. I mean, I know myself coming from contractor side of things, back, way back, that. That's exactly what I would do, because I don't know what you guys are going to decide, so. That's just be wary of that.
And there's also an issue too of now you're changing the scope of work and the previous contractor's never done that. So now he doesn't know what it's actually gonna take to actually accomplish mowing the full county in that timeframe you're requesting of. So he doesn't know, what do I build? Do I build four mowers and five, or five mowers, right? And now all of a sudden, like I said. The price doesn't just kinda go up, like you just simply multiply things by two or a fraction of two. Because of the capital investment you're asking somebody to make and then that capital investment. Because of the time and the, the specialized nature of the work of mowing, is you only have those three months. So you're asking somebody, like a new tractor and a new mower is three hundred thousand dollars, right? So of course they're gonna do some used or whatever, but that's a huge capital investment to ask somebody to make for three months without being rewarded. So the more that, every time you add an extra mower, it's not just simple, where you times it by the same factor of the first two, right?
It's more than three months, like it goes till October.
We go to September thirtieth. The contract says September thirtieth, but we definitely have granted deadlines, especially for the drainage ditch stuff. What's that, sorry? Yeah, like usually they start June twentieth is when they started this year, so it's not like July, August, September, plus ten days, so a hundred days. Hundred days, but we've granted extensions into October because if the crops aren't off on the drainage ditches, sometimes when they do the drainage ditches, they need to be able to turn out. Because of muddle, beaver dam, whatever else, so they need the crop being off. That's a lot of times when we offer extensions. This contractor, last year they had some, uh, breakdowns and like the ditch mowing did go into September. Um, but we can shorten that window, but then that adds another mower in there, right? So that's when the costs start going up.
The north and the south.
Was that, sorry?
They can also put two tenders, not one for the north, one for the south.
Oh yeah, you could, you could bring two contractors in for sure.
So why don't you, between now and budget time? Obviously you will, is repair report for recontracting this, all you think would be, you know, best. You're based on what Charles said, by getting multiple options that might not really be helpful. Uh, maybe just have an option of half full cut, half. Half full cut, half shoulder cut, whatever you think is, you know, with, with. Go your needs.
Well, the problem with that is I don't know what your guys' budget is, right? So like if you guys would tell me. I'm okay with spending three quarters of a million dollars for mowing. I know what I can build you, right? But if you guys are telling me. Today and what's been the last seven years of cutting and maintaining a lean effective budget. If you guys want to spend. Three hundred thousand dollars less, this is the most efficient way to mow. Keep in mind, you're gonna have to hear the pushback of lack of shoulder cut, some issues with grading. Like another thing we could do is build in more hourly into the contracts. Right now the contract is based on like a hundred hours hourly. We could build in more hourly for. Whatever Charles thinks his mowing or his uh, re-graveling program is gonna be, or they could get on the same schedule as us, north and south. And if there's a special area and we're mowing in the uh, north and he's got. This two hundred kilometers of road that needs done for this project, we could put that in the hourly by having that more flexible flexibility in the hourly. Of the contract, right? Cause the contract says for a hundred hours, you'll bill us a hundred and sixty dollars hourly, right? So we could do stuff like that and then just go and say, hey. Uh, June twentieth to July first, I need you to go to the shoulder roads on these two hundred kilometers. Charles gives me a map. I give them a map, that's where they start. They take on that, right? Then you guys will feel Gary if they're more one, you'll feel the concerns of why did this area get a shoulder cut, not me, right? We could do stuff like that, right? To provide flexibility of certain areas. But. If the growing consensus of council is. We do not want to spend more than three hundred thousand dollars. Everything else doesn't matter, right? So if that's the major concern is we don't want to spend more on mowing than three hundred. Like what are you asking me to do? You're asking me to do a paper creation exercise to say we did it when we all know the number's three hundred? But if there is appetite from. More than thirty-seven on council to have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. Then we can explore that exercise.
Well, I mean, that's really tough for us to decide what we want to spend the way I haven't seen it, but maybe. Maybe we're not gonna buy two new graders or maybe we're not gonna, we, we can reduce the gravel cycle or, or something that can offset increases. We don't know what that increase would be. Um, so I mean, a paper exercise, uh, I mean, that's what we need. We need that back on information to make these decisions and. Uh, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, well, it's a stick with three hundred thousand and ask them to do more. That's not gonna work. Or I'm not, I'm not comfortable saying let's double the budget. When we don't know where that's gonna come from, right? When we're, we're, we're making decisions to double the budget as it is, so.
Well, in the email, I did give out some cost reductions that I thought were pretty conservative. Charles agreed they were pretty conservative. Like to me, if you're gonna double and say mow everything full cut. You're not getting that program for anything less than six hundred thousand. I think it's closer to seven, right? If you want to mow half full cut, half shoulder cut every year, I think you're in the five hundred to five twenty-five range, right? That's where I think you are. If the guy comes in at four seventy-five, great, huge win for us. But like those are the numbers you basically. Wh- where you're working from, right? Like I can't give you an exact number. These guys aren't gonna give me an exact number either until they fill out the package. Like last time. I asked Aaron, he said, this is where I feel like I'd have to be on a shoulder cut number. Then that's when I ran all the numbers for you guys. Last time I gave you guys a report last October, right? So. I don't think we're gonna be surprised and ask somebody to do half full cut, half shoulder cut, and they're gonna come in at three forty. Like that's not gonna happen, right? So is there appetite to spend five fifty to six hundred thousand? That's. Questions.
When we, when we made the decision to go with this, we based it on. Keeping brushing, like. Wasn't based on beautification or making roads, say, or based it on that, um. And so are, are we getting flooded with complaints about our mowing?
In the south for sure. And I think mostly in the south for sure, because this is the first year now that they're not getting anything, right? So like.
The first year?
Yeah.
Second time.
Oh yeah, cause I guess.
This is the second cycle.
Yeah, the second cycle, right? So now it's like, I get all the complaints on the year that we don't get it, right? So.
So even if you went to the Facebook post, I think I shared it and you read the comments, there were some comments saying like. Yeah, it's an issue. And then there was one guy saying like.
Love the ditches.
Yeah, I love the ditches being what a waste of taxpayer money. So like. There are two sides of every coin, right? And the guy that's saying it's a waste of money, he's probably not writing us a letter saying. Thank you for quit wasting all that money, right? It's the disgruntled people that are phoning in saying, hey.
Well, remember the rate period meeting that Brenda and Kayla had, we had. Three percent, we plan paying more taxes to have our ditches mowed, so.
Yeah.
There's varying opinions.
Yeah. And that's what I was also mentioned in my email, similar to Brent, like. All the factors we've discussed, if all of a sudden today, you guys weight those priority and put more value on. Safety, aesthetics. Uh, visibility, whatever else, if those all of a sudden are weighted different, well, that's your justification for being like. Yeah. I'm okay with spending six hundred thousand, right? Like that's fine if things change. But if the math and the weighting for at least four or seven of you has not changed. The number is gonna be three hundred thousand less, right? If a bunch of you that voted differently last October, weight those things differently amongst yourselves when you guys talk. And you say, yeah, it's worth spending that money, I think. Okay, yeah, the number's gonna be five, five to six hundred thousand, right? Like if that's what you guys can stomach in my budget. Uh, without taking anything away from public works, like I'm sure Charles don't want to have to, you know, you give me three hundred thousand, you go to Charles and say, hey, cut three hundred thousand. Cause we're mowing, right? He doesn't want to see that either, right? So. And then Josh just makes the money up here, right? Easy job.
You have seen a budget, we pass a five-year budget, so you have seen it.
And so mowing was.
Mowing stays the same.
Based on a two-year contract.
It's actually, I think, probably inflated a little bit because we know the contracts expire.
Well, you know, everything, so add another five percent on or whatever there is.
Probably like twenty-five or so grand, right?
But you guys make that pretty easy for the most part of your budget for last decade, it's just. Stay the same, we just cherry pick where things come from.
But I mean, we have. Other external, I mean, like we have any negotiation going on about. Everything as we heard over and over, inflation, you know, you can go by. Parts for the graders, by parts for anything that was not what it used to be, so. It's the same, but it's not the same, right? And it's gonna be, it's gonna have a proportion of work with everything, so.
Well, that's what Tim discussed at that meeting is if you hold flat, but all your costs are going up, your level of service is not staying the same. At some point, your level of service drops because you know, your costs are digging into it, right?
You guys designed that entire policy to do just that, with the road class.
So firstly, I'm not hearing the complaints of Caleb's or anybody else's. And I, I would stay as is. Until somebody starts to revolt about it and say that this is not acceptable and. I mean, you're seeing rush coming back.
But, but yeah, but I, I know, Terry, what about last year when you, when the north didn't get mowed? Was there not?
I had some people phone and ask me. Oh, are we getting mowed this year? And I just said, no, it's half full cut every other year. And most people just go, oh, okay. Like and then carry on, right? But. It's, it's like ten or twenty calls a year of saying, hey, are we getting mowed this year? And you go, no, we're not. And they go, okay, most people, right?
I mean, I always. I refer to it because I've lived here all my life and that my level of service has gone up to kind of an old standard and all that's what people expect. I have a. There's no such thing as more, more, you can ditch it, right? We're happy to have a road to drive, well, you know.
Yeah.
Lots of B C and Saskatchewan, like some of the less wealthy provinces and municipalities, they don't do any mowing at all, like. So.
You like it, you know, you care. Well, then we get more feedback.
Twenty people are complaining, they're the ones that responded.
So I think we should put more information into the question, if you do a question, maybe say it's gonna cost us.
You give them the.
XML extra to actually run that.
But even that doesn't. Even that doesn't paint the whole picture because you guys know what else, everything else costs, right? So if you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, or you're just deciding we're gonna raise taxes or find the money somewhere else. You guys have to make that decision. Like if you start putting all this gravy in the budget, sure, we'll do it. We'll take more money. We'll spend more money how you guys see effective. But then you guys are gonna get the calls and why'd my mill rate go up or whatever you guys do it, right?
But you should make that part of the question or the poll.
But I don't think people have as much information as the seven people at this table to see the big picture of like where all the money goes. Cause like we hear it all the time. Somebody goes, well, I pay taxes, why isn't my mold road? And it's like, oh, okay, well. There's all these others. They could.
There's lots of do.
Yeah.
So what do you think? Um, what are the chances of getting more than one contractor buying like?
Last year we had three.
Oh.
Last couple of years, we found three. There's a guy, Silver Works based out of Manitoba, that's mowing a lot of counties in Red Deer and stuff. They, they put in both last tenders. Peter put in the two tenders ago and then Peter's nephew put in a tender for this one, plus that Aaron guy we have now. So we've actually had three. Where there were lots of years before, when we were doing the whole county, we were only getting one. And I don't know, we're only getting one because that was a tremendous scope of work to ask people to do in a hundred days, so it was scaring a lot of guys off, like. Do we open it up and split contracts and now we deal with? Two contractors potentially different, right? Um. Like that's an option. I don't, I don't really think it's gonna make it much more cost effective, but. We might broaden it to the people that feel like they could handle that amount of work. But still. If like I don't get clear direction from you guys on what you're willing to spend. I'm flying in the dark, right?
And just as soon it will come with the taxes.
As soon as you guys get me a number that the collective four out of seven of you. Are happy with six hundred thousand, I'll build you whatever you want, right? Like if we gotta get people out there and cut it with shares and spend a million dollars, we'll get it done.
Guys invest in dolts.
Yeah.
Get back to the. Uh. Grass creep again. Mowers don't.
Prominent.
Won't help that. That's our road classification that's doing that. And unless we get. Our graders working to. To keep it, keep it down or keep it wider, that's where that is coming in. We're not. You can mow to, everybody mows their lawn, it doesn't kill the grass. We gotta do something else. That's where that, you know, you're done, you're not gonna change the.
I think what Charles was talking about is when you, so I imagine once a year, the graders are cutting the shoulder. So really aggressive with the blade, cutting that shoulder, that sawed out. And it's when you roll that whole material of grass now in with the gravel. All of a sudden, you're trying to ask a grader to separate sawed and grass from gravel. It's just not gonna happen, right? So that's the issue, I think he's talking.
And, and I mean, we, we have looked into. Uh, in the background here that. Device that attaches to the grader that kind of. It shapes your shoulder. And it. Partially reclaims your gravel. Turfs your, your dirt and your sod, but. That's, that's a fairly substantial cost. That's a, that's a means of equipment, but.
That's all I, I just wanted to prove it out that more isn't gonna do that.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's our, our road classifications doing that, so.
Well, and we also talked about spreading the shoulder with glyphosate as well, but that adds in now you have a chemical budget, you're probably hiring. Another person, you now have a rig in the back of a truck, another vehicle dedicated to that. So there's cost to all these things that you think you're saving money mowing or doing whatever, and then you just added it on somebody else's, so. Great, you made mine cheaper, but now all of a sudden Charles is coming here asking for a hundred and fifty grand for a different project, right? So we, we can just accept it for information. I don't, I don't know how you guys are gonna wanna decide. You know, when you're having coffee with each other, your phone calls, decide where that number is, but. It'd be much better if you give me a number you're comfortable with and then I can tell you where we can end up, right?
Well, and, and the budget number is the big thing. That's what I hear lots of, oh, well, you know, Northern Sunrise County or N P A P has this for their mowing budget and it's like, okay, but they're also. Not the same size, right? So that's what I got a lot of too. Well, how come your budget's three hundred thousand and they're doing their whole county for that and it's like, okay, well. Yeah, because they're not the same, right?
And, and one of the things too, and, and I think I might have mentioned it in my email there. Uh, that. You look at a county like Clear Hills County. And they are. They do no grading in house. And all their operators are mowing. You're, well, not you're. There's some. So that's, they have all their mowing in house, but no. So.
Their, their grading is all contract?
Yep, yeah, they have all contract.
But I mean, the data, there's a cost to.
Oh, yeah, there's a cost no matter what.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'm just saying, that's, that's what our neighbors are doing.
So what do they do with their mowing crew in the winter time? And I mean, that, after that three months is gone.
There's, you've seen the mobiles. Yep. They, yeah, I don't know what their tire staff looks like from public works, but essentially they do mowing inside. They contrast everything else out, the culverts, they're. Well, that, I'm not, I ain't advocating for that, but for us.
In regards to all of this. Twenty years ago, our budget was a hell of a lot more than it is now. Correct? You know what I mean? Our, our financial. Situation back when we were doing all this great mowing and everything else. We had a bigger budget.
When I first started here, my budget was one point four million dollars. Today it's eight hundred and fifty thousand.
How much?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand. That, that includes uh. Eighty thousand dollars for snow removal. So. What we're doing versus what we're spending with all the inflation we've known we've happened in the eleven years I've been here. Like that's where we are, right? So the level of service has reduced based on things that were placed to priority of not raising taxes. You know, we went through the downturn, the whole election N E P, all those factors have led to why we're here.
Mowing though, from twenty eighteen to last year, with what we actually spent, it's about half.
Like half.
Yeah.
And that's what our people need to know, like. You know, we gotta. Put it in the. Let them know.
Yeah.
Why we've done it this way, instead of them saying, well, get rid of these old. Bogies that are on the board. Because they're making stupid decisions, you know? Maybe they need to come to some of the meetings and find out, but we've been trying that hasn't worked. We put something in the news, I don't know, but it's time that they realize our budget is not the same as it was.
Yeah. And when we.
And, and I think to echo Brent's point, but why do we mow? What is the reason that we mow? Is it brush control or what is it, right? Cause we had that conversation when we decided to switch, that the biggest priority was brush control.
Just be careful with blaming your budget too, because your budget is whatever you guys to spend.
Money that we have coming in has changed. Has it not?
Sure, but it's higher.
Is it higher?
Yes, because what you're spending is higher.
Yes.
It's higher now than it was when I started. But it was done slowly and begrudgingly, every single one of those increases.
But it's not coming from my budgets. My budget's been real straight.
No, just every single thing that you guys have and do compared to ten years ago costs more money.
Yes.
Every single day.
So like that's where it is, right? There's been less priority placed in the ag budget and more priority decided we need. Bridges, roads, culvert changes, the things that public works, you just can't say no to utilities, right? So like, everything comes with trade-offs, right? It's, you know, you guys are just shuffling money. And until Boeing takes precedent over. Bridges, utilities, emergency health services, like fire department costs go up, money you give to Manning goes up, like. Until you're gonna tell your rate payers, mowing is, you know, on your, when we do a new business plan. If you put mowing at number one, hey, yeah, let's spend some money on it. But mowing is like. You guys just think of your list of things where mowing falls on the priority and it's probably like way down below fifty, right? So that's the stuff I'm saying, there's no point doing a poll because only you guys know what the fifty list is. Because people like even me, I work at the county. I don't know two thirds of the stuff you guys are involved in and where you're placing money as a priority. Neither is the next guy, right? I'm more informed than most of them. So at some point. You guys have to be okay with criticism, because the next guy that thinks they're gonna run in your war and take your position, they're gonna get in here and they're gonna go.
Same.
Holy shit, right? Like.
What do you mean we have to give a million dollars?
So like, so I mean, we're going in circles. What do we want to be doing? You don't need a, you need a.
I heard from everybody that they want more time to think about it, except for information. You guys at some point come to a consensus, you tell me what the number is.
Yep.
I'll build you a budget.
I mean, we heard that also, we can think about it. I mean, we might have copies of residents in light city. You know, let's.
Should we maybe bring it back as a item on the agenda after the election and then the new council can make a decision on that? Yeah, we could, we could price it out and.
We could, we could price it out and work as a budget.
Have you guys explored setting your strategic planning meeting dates yet or? When you want a preliminary budget meeting is usually right after that. Those are all things we haven't talked about yet that are going to happen very quickly since it's almost August. And then the election in October.
Very, yeah.
We have that session at our.
Usually I wouldn't initiate a strategic planning.
There's no point doing it before the election.
I see you here, I was making notes that will, uh, will have a kind of a preliminary. You know, budget discussion either in August or September.
Yeah, it just, again, it's weird on an election year, if you guys are not going to change anything. Well, I don't know what the point of having an entire preliminary budget meeting in August. We, we, we made our decision on this, how we were going to do it this year at the moment.
Yeah, we're not changing nothing for this year.
But, but again, I mean, that's for next season's decision.
Yeah.
I mean, we, maybe we should have a little thicker skin when we get. Messages like this. We, we make these decisions based on our discussion here.
So long as we, this, this whole discussion of, of those from one highlight rate bear that's sort of the holiday Kayla, right? I mean, I've heard nothing about a whole group rest of you. I mean, I, I looked at a sweet, on a drove here. Sweet clover must love drugs because I got four foot sweet clover along my roads and. That's just the way it is, right? I. Deer runs up in front of me and well, I guess that's bad luck, but it hasn't happened.
See, and we could go to a program where we do more roadside spraying and spray the sweet clover down, but then all of a sudden you're. You know, you're putting money somewhere else.
They're pulling away from the spraying too, so.
We got lots of complaints when I first started working here and we tried to spray about a fifth of the county, just weeds or not, anything, straight grass. We were spraying it no matter what and we got tons of complaints. And when we quit that program, we did, that was the first time we ever had people phone in and say thank you for quit just spraying. Everything, right? So.
But I mean, if you got spraying, I mean, you're all using the. I'm assuming just something that kills whatever's growing, not the stuff. So it's like mowing and spray it and then two weeks later you're in and it's kind of right back again, right?
But the commercial chemicals we spray are, you know, they're like sixty-three dollars an acre, right? Like they're not, they're not cheap, right? So when we used to do that, we were spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on a contractor to spray and then we were spending seventy thousand dollars on chemical. So not only was our mowing program four hundred thousand, but we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar spraying program on top of it, right? That's why we're not one point four million and we're eight hundred and fifty thousand now, right? But I, I, I would just accept for information until. After your guys' election and then we can put something together when hopefully all you guys are back and we can just kind of keep going. Or maybe other people have other ideas.
Well. Wily discussion, we didn't really gain anything other than I think that we, we kind of got direction now that. It's up to council to decide what we want to do, right? Yeah.
Like.
Any last thoughts? All in favor?
Yeah, Brian.
So, uh, Jimmy, you have one more item under the ten point zero, does anybody write before that?
The, the point six. Apologize for that, I'll look for it for that.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody keeping looking out by rebranding.
Here for, nobody wants to, I shouldn't take one, I reckon, so. Um, thanks, Charles.